When she heard, oh, did in church. For a year.
Yeah. Randy, just like the nice above your button. They're only five. They're really sensitive. That's good. Over. Thank you. Yeah.
You're just very soft.
We ready to get? Okay, this thing say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Well, I thank everybody for coming out and seeing us today. We'll get this thing going. Somebody give me approval of the agenda, please.
I make the motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, Randy. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any announcements? Okay, public comment. I've got Ruth Williams signed up.
Um, first of all, I just want to publicly thank all of you for including the Mills River Life Enrichment Center in your budget, the annual budget, and for believing and supporting the work that we do with our senior adults in the community. We appreciate it more than, than you know. We're very, very, very grateful. I wish there was more people here to hear it, but we, it is heartfelt and we do appreciate it. Second thing, I just wanted to follow up on if there's any decisions or progress made in the COVID relief money that we had talked about in the past.
Uh, we've just discussed it a little. We haven't got anything.
I know it's a lot.
Play in on that. Any other?
Are y'all waiting until we have a meeting for public or?
Well, so this was something I was gonna plan to cover at the end of the meeting tonight during closing remarks is that, I think we're to the point now where we've talked about it sort of in general terms enough. You sit down as, as a group, I think, as, as the council and identify some high level categories and then go out to the public for more feedback. I don't have a particular date in mind, but I think that's our, our next step.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. When you say go out to the public, can you just be a little bit more defining on that?
So we're gonna have basically a couple of public input sessions like we would for any other project we have going on. And then we will put together an advertisement going out to let people know that now is the time to apply.
Okay, so we would have to reapply?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, this is.
Is there an application that's available or?
It's not available yet, but it will be.
It will be. Okay, okay. So just stay attuned to the meetings or?
Yeah, I would.
Will you notify us?
Yeah, you probably looking to probably get started on this maybe November and October. On the process.
I would say at the latest, yeah, yeah. So if you pay attention to the meetings, watch, check out the website and just read the newspaper because we'll do a press release for it as well.
Okay.
And I'll make sure you're included on that release.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate it.
And I'm sure we'll spread those two public input sessions out.
Okay.
Probably a month apart at least.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Foster?
Okay, I'm Jim Foster's all you know. I guess I'm totally confused. I thought the funds for Merlot was in the budget for this year.
It is Jim there. So in, in the operating budget this year, council approved. I believe it was $10,000 to Merlot.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Well, anyway, you pretty much answered my question. I, I do have a suggestion or a comment. I sure wish you'd take another look at it for sure and consider doing what we're done for the farmer's market, maybe. Merlot's a great thing. And I know when we were doing these surveys about the comprehensive plan, something for the senior citizens kept coming up. And this program has been in existence for 15 years. They've got a proven track record. And this is, you don't have to start something. It's already here. Anyway, enough said about that. Uh, I remember sometime ago I stood right here and, uh, uh, made some comments and that was one of them. Y'all jumped on it and you've taken care of it. I also made some comments. We need a new audio and sound system here. Well, we have it and I think Daniel's probably pulled his hair out getting, getting it done. But thank you. I think that night that, that I mentioned it. Some, I think Randy, if I remember right, said, let's look at it and y'all did. So thank you. Cause we certainly.
And I understand it's still a work in progress.
Well, yeah.
Audio and all.
It's, it's computer operated. So yes, it's a work in progress. I know. And a couple of the comments I'd like to make, if there's some way we can use some of those, what is it, ARC, we call it funds to improve our internet service in Mills River and our cell service, the cell services going downhill lately. Everywhere I've had, well, I'll use the name Verizon because I've had Verizon forever, but it ain't. If there's some way you could do a private fund of whatever it takes to work with some of these people to, to improve it. Because there is a Mills River don't have any cell service. We all know that. But that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
And Daniel, it's my understanding that the tower that we're working together with Henderson County will have some trans, uh, repeaters or whatever for the cell service on those also.
That's right.
Improved service. So we are already working diligently on that one too.
Well, they're also currently pulling new cable wires down through here for internet. Cause I spoke with them the other day. They were on my property putting stuff up and I went and just.
I think that was AT&T.
Was it AT&T? They said it was.
I mean, that's, they are extending. What they call it. I'll see them around with some other ones. It's the improved. I, they're extending their wires.
Fiber on thing.
The other people we have already. I had already they get out those couple of years. It used to be more than.
They told me they were just putting in new, um, cable wires for internet.
Yeah.
And I was just wanting to make sure that my animals wasn't in the way.
Fiber optic?
Okay, we gain more public comment?
Would it be feasible to look at Merlot tonight and see what their needs might be so we can be thinking about it?
Uh, well, I don't think Merlot's needs have changed any, just the, uh, uh, wishful dream of some more money to help, correct?
Keep it going.
Yeah, keep it going. Okay.
But y'all are good right now? Okay.
All right. Uh, approval of the consent agenda?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Randy. Second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, moving on to the regular agenda, state of emergency and remote meetings.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, back in 2020, when the COVID-19 pandemic fell upon us, the state issued a statement of emergency that was statewide that affected everybody in the state. And soon thereafter, the legislature actually changed the, the law regarding open meetings requirements, allowing municipalities to have remote meetings. Um, so in two, in May of 2020, the town adopted a policy outlining how that works and in what conditions, under which conditions that would apply. So it allowed for conference calls, participation by phone, talked about the number of quorum, um, which is how we got into the soul broadcasting of these, of these meetings and, and we use Zoom for that platform most of the time. The statement of emergency was at least recently lifted by the governor. And therefore the law that allowed for public meeting, excuse me, remote meetings uh, is no longer valid. It's only valid during a statement of emergency. So because we have a, a policy on, on file and the meetings, uh, can no longer be done remotely, we thought it was best to repeal that policy. Um, uh, just so that we're in line with, with the law. And that does mean it, it, the, the law very clearly states that applies to elected bodies, county commissions, town boards, uh, elected councils. Um, there is no clear distinction, um, for appointed boards, like your planning board and boards of adjustment. Although the general consensus seems to be that those are okay to have remote participation. Um, but we don't want to be a test case in that, in that instance. Um, so we're, we're recommending that the policy be repealed in all committees, including um, the planning board, board of adjustment, parks, trails, recreation, as well as the ag advisory board, all required to be remote, excuse me, in-person participation. Now, that does not mean a board member could not, um, log into a meeting on Facebook or Zoom and, and watch, but they can't participate actively in the meeting and they can't, can't, they can't be counted towards quorum. But if they just want to sort of keep up with what's going on, they're welcome to watch remotely. It doesn't apply to, uh, citizens. So if you have a request in front of you for a rezoning, for example, and someone is unable to attend in person, they can still, um, well, I should say it's up to the board to say whether or not they would allow that participation remotely. There's nothing in the law prohibiting it. So, uh, we were leaving it as is and, and would still offer that opportunity to people if they needed it. Um, it is convenient for consultants that, you know, work on the other side of the state, for example. Um, it saves us money by not having to pay them the travel to come up here, uh, to present something, for example. So in summary, um, again, this clearly applies to elected bodies. Um, to make it simple and, and uniform across the board, we are recommending that all boards be required to meet in person. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions pertaining to this?
Uh, I do. Uh, uh, a lawyer wants to zoom in, not for us, but, uh, planning board of adjustments.
Mm-hmm.
It's up to that board to decide if they can?
No, I think it would be up to this board to say the policy is.
Oh, just across the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So Daniel, even before this, uh, policy came into effect here, there was, there was an option and it had been used in fire, by fire councils to phone in if you were out of town or something like that. So is this going to remove that option also?
It does.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Is that why the, that statement at the top of the agenda is gone?
Yes. In case you don't remember, the statement that Mr. Cantrell was referring to is the last couple of months, there was under public comment, uh, there was a phrase in there saying that one or more members may participate remotely. Just to put the public on notice that there may be someone absent who's still participating. But because remote participation is not allowed anymore, that's been both in the agenda.
Randy, just to clarify a little bit for you, we allowed the, the conference calling prior to this?
Yeah.
Because on the advice of the school of government, the they didn't see anything in the open meetings law that specifically said you could not participate that way. Board members could not. It was, it did say in person, but the way it was worded, they were a little, felt it was a little gray. But once the legislature clarified and changed the open meetings law where it was allowed under a state of emergency, a governor issued state of emergency. They feel it now that that means that the legislature is saying it always was, it was always intended to not allow a governing board to participate remotely.
I guess that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yes. Yeah, it changed.
Yeah.
But when they, when they made the change, everybody's interpretation changed.
Okay.
So to formalize this, we need to adopt the resolution?
Yes, please.
If somebody, uh, gain more discussion or questions about this before we move forward with getting a motion for this resolution?
And we're and it's your, I don't know if that's what Jeff was gonna place into a motion, but it's your recommendation, Daniel, that this apply to all boards.
That's, that's correct.
Everybody okay with that?
Somebody would make a motion. You need to add it into the motion. Anything else we're looking for in this motion other than what's in black and white on this resolution?
I don't think we need anything further. If you want to clarify that it applies to all boards, that might just help for the record.
Okay. Would it need to go back even farther than whenever in May, whenever we did this to say that the previous way we were doing it?
No, because the, the policy that was adopted in May included the conference call in, and it made reference to that previous one.
Okay.
Mayor Gonsal, I'll move that this council passed resolution 2022 dash zero eight, the resolution repealing electronic meetings policy.
You want to add that it would apply to all our boards in your motion?
I will amend my motion to also include that the repealing of the policy will apply to all boards that serve the town of Mills River.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sandra. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, board of adjustment membership?
At your meeting, uh, earlier this month on the 11th, we were talking about our, our board of adjustment in particular, but it really applies to all boards. Uh, and about attendance. So in the, in your packet, uh, on the very last page, under the staff report for board of adjustment, you'll see an attendance record specifically for the board of adjustment. And this came up, uh, because of a recent case wherein we had, uh, we have a five-member board with two alternates from the planning board. And we were not able to hear a variant, variance case because in order to hear a variance, you have to have um, four fifths of your board present and a quorum is three people, four fifths is four people. We had enough for a quorum, but we could not hear the variance because we did not, did not have that fourth person. So, uh, there's a couple of options before the board. You can, one option would be to expand the number of alternates on the board of adjustment with the hope that if regular members are unable to attend, you've got someone else you can call upon. I'll just remind the, the public who may be listening that, um, prior to each meeting, the board of adjustment members are reminded um, when the packet goes out and then typically, typically the day of the meeting, they're reminded as well, either the phone call or a text message. Um, and there are allowances for excused absences. So again, the, the quite couple of options, one would be to expand the number of board members, excuse me, alternate board members. You could expand the number of members on the board, the regular board. Um, although that doesn't necessarily help with this particular instance because if you've got a, a seven-member board, for example, you'd have to have at least five people per case. Whereas right now you have five people and you need four. So it, it would help in terms of you'd have more opinions and more people to review a case, but it doesn't necessarily address the issue that, that we've been faced with right now. Um, and I will just say in, in, in support of board members there, when they apply for these boards, the board of adjustment meets, um, on even months throughout the year. Um, and we have been meeting a little bit more than that the last couple of years. And that's just a product of increased development activity that requires variances and or special use permits. Some towns do pay their board members a stipend for actual meetings attended, not just being on the board, but for meetings that they actually attend. Um, there's no hard and fast rule for that. $25 a meeting, $50 a meeting. I've seen it as high as $75 a meeting, um, for boards of adjustment and planning boards. So again, this is in part for your information, uh, in part just as a general discussion item to see how the board wants to go on this. I think the, the best option at this point might be to increase the number of alternates on the board. Leave the, the board as a five-member board, but have an extra alternate that could serve uh, in the event the other two alternates were not available to serve that evening.
Any thoughts, discussion on this?
So whenever somebody's on as an alternate, Daniel, is it made clear? Or is it made clear to them that they're expected to be at the board of adjustments?
What, what was the first part of your question? I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
If, if they are appointed as an alternate
Mm-hmm.
for the board of adjustments or is it made clear to them that they are expected to be here at a board of adjustments?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, we do ask that the alternates attend meetings just as if they were a member of the board in the event that someone does not show up that was planning to show up.
I mean, and I get it, you know, it's a, it's a volunteer board.
Mm-hmm.
And I've been at quite a few board of adjustments meetings and I've never saw an alter.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I did see, I think I did see Jim one time.
Mm-hmm.
At, whenever he was put off, but we have such a hard time filling these seats with people that are actually on the board.
Mm-hmm.
I don't really see that expanding the number of alternates is gonna help us out that much because we can't even help each other anyway. So my next question is how are the meetings scheduled?
They are the first Tuesday of the month, I believe, of every, of even, even months of the year. Is that correct? Or as needed is what's in the, in the.
I think that might be our problem.
Mm-hmm.
Can we, can we? Can we just leave it at the ever other month? Uh, and not be as needed because if somebody's wanting a variance, you know, it's they're wanting something that's outside of our ordinances anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So do a lot of towns have them wait until the next scheduled meeting? Or is that normal to have as needed?
Want to answer that?
I, I can't tell you what other towns have done, but Mills River has always tried to be as accommodating as possible. This meeting schedule was set up when the board of adjustments would realistically meet twice a year. Um, and then we even had a period before the pandemic where they didn't meet for two years. And now that development has increased, the need for the board to meet more regularly has increased. So most of your members signed up with the idea of a meeting every other month. But your chair has, has, has always encouraged us to schedule special meetings if we needed, rather than making someone wait for two months. I mean, realistically, if we meet tonight and somebody walks in the door tomorrow, they've got to wait two months. So it, it's it's how, how, how accommodating do you want the board to be? Like it's your choice.
What, what has been standard as far as accommodation, two weeks, a month? Um, like if they come in here and it's three weeks to an even month meeting, do we try to, if they're claiming a hardship, do we try to get them on in before or do we just wait the three weeks?
It, it takes us, we always say 30 days. Because we need time to advertise and staff needs time for review. Mike, do you want?
That's about the same thing, you know, public notice requirement, staff time to prepare for the meeting.
So theoretically, they could come in here three weeks before a, a scheduled meeting and there's just no way to make that happen. So they, if we went just every two months, it would put them waiting almost three months before it's heard, correct?
It, it just depends on the timing.
Yeah, it's a timeless thing.
There's, there's been a situation where it's been three weeks before and we've been able to scoot them in, put the advertisement out.
Okay.
But, but it's really situationally dependent.
What would be the chances that if you strictly did every other month, that you got to where you had to hear multiple variances in a meeting? You know, it's a four-hour meeting.
We, we've already done that. I mean, it, it we, we prefer to hear one, one meeting, but it, we have heard two or three in an evening.
Is, you know, as I'm looking at this, uh, board of adjustment roll call here, I see where one individual is almost nonexistent. And I take it that's a regular, not a I think, uh, Mr. Moore, Mr. Foster or Aldridge.
That's correct.
Isn't his term up? In the next month or so?
I don't know that.
January of 2023, I'm told.
Okay.
Okay, so. Do we have, how many do we have as alternates? Not now.
Two.
Two?
Mm-hmm. That's right.
And, and it may have been a meeting that you weren't at, Randy, but, um, Jeff Moore is an alternate and he has that on the board.
Yeah.
More, more than once.
Yeah.
So would it help if we removed the one that's been absent the most here and move an alternate up? Uh, to the seat or what?
Mr. McGah is, is a very good member when he's able to attend.
Right. I, I think he's got some school that's.
Yeah. I mean, he has legitimate excuses or, or, or reasons for not attending, but the only worry I would have with that is, is being able to replace that position then, because then you're creating a vacancy. Um, you have to move an alternate up or you've got an empty vacant spot.
Is there any open or is there any applications?
I do have one. It, it's from Dennis Grass.
Okay.
I'd be happy to provide the copy of it if you want to see it.
One thing we have not done that might be an option is pull the board members to find out if there's another day of the month that might work for them.
I think that'd be a good starting point.
Yeah.
Pull them and see if a different day would work better.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, and if they can all work together to move it or rotate them or something.
Mm-hmm.
As the interest keeps going up, we might see a decline in the building here in another year or so, and it might go back
Mm-hmm.
where they're not meeting as regular.
Mm-hmm.
So anything we do right now might be a little overkill other than just try to accommodate the situation the best we can.
Mr. Foster, would you consider going up and being on the board instead of being an alternate?
Pardon?
Would you consider moving up and being on the board instead of being an alternate?
Really, for not to just, I'm, I'm still learning.
Okay.
And Sandra, he's the second alternate. The, the, the policy has always been move the first alternate up and then the second alternate.
Okay.
The first, second alternate moves to the first alternate's position and then goes up.
Okay. Well, we could ask Jeff Moore.
Yeah.
Because it'd be easier to replace an alternate, probably.
But with Brandon's being through January and him having a legitimate excuse for not being here, I I can deal with that till January. So he could fulfill his term. You know, it's not our standard practice that I remember cutting anybody's terms off short in Mills River, so I wouldn't want to try to start that with this if we could help it. But yeah, I think if we talk to him, we could get him maybe moved to a different day, or it might help.
Yeah, I think I think that's a good first step before we start making any sort of changes to policies. Because that that really is just a schedule we have to republish is really all around too.
Other than that, I do, anybody got, Jeff, you got anything else to throw at this?
Uh, no, I'm sort of in Randy's camp. I think we just need to be more mindful of the meetings and and while I'm all for customer service, it's a disservice to have them appear and then not have a quorum. So I don't know, we're doing any favors by meeting more often and then making it more of a challenge to have these volunteers participate. So I I I like Randy's idea of let's sort of focus on having the meetings at a time that can be met by the current members. And and if it means clients have to wait a little longer for the board just to meet, it's just the fact that it's a volunteer board and you know, we've had non-quarms before, and I think that's more painful than having to wait an extra three or four weeks.
Okay, so you'll start with reaching out to them and seeing if we can move the date if it helps.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to C. I'm going to hand this signers for the purchase of money market and the pile bill accounts.
I'm going to recognize Sue for this one.
It it came to my attention that when we appointed council members as alternate signers on the operating account, we were very specific, and we did it for just the operating account. There shouldn't be too many instances where we would need alternate signers on the money market account or the Powellville account. But, you know, as I told Daniel, and he cringed, I'm getting ready to go on vacation fairly soon. If I get hit by a bus or something, nobody can draw that money out. Nobody can even transfer the money out. Whereas, you know, if we appoint alternate signers, then worst case, somebody walks over to the bank and says, help me transfer my money. And it would be my suggestion to keep it the same signers on the operating account, but it's certainly council's pleasure.
I think just for a little bit of background, again, for the public, Sue, the reason we have this is separation of duties, first of all, but but protection so that only a couple of council members are able to authorize transfers. And there's a third point that I was going to make, but I've since forgotten, but there's a couple of council members that are authorized. I believe it's the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem at this point.
Yes, yes, it is the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem right now, and it is, as he said, it's it's separation of duties, but it's also protection. For one thing, you always have one council member or possibly two overseeing where the money is going. It it protects staff, but it also protects council because somebody's actually looking at where the money is going. But by keeping two signers, again, it's a protection. It it it's really hard to commit fraud if you have as many eyes looking at the the invoices and the bills and the checks as we do. Most invoices come in and almost everyone in the building touches it before it's actually paid out as well as at least one council member. So we're we're just trying to protect your money.
Okay, but in this instance, you're only looking for one more signer, correct?
Mr. Austin was already on there. But I would be looking for a motion to include reappointing him and appointing yourself if that's where you're going.
Okay. Well, I'll leave that up to council as to who they nominate for for that duty. I mean, I'd be willing to do it because it's only going to be a brief instance if it ever has to be done. Somebody make us a motion to for someone to be the backup signer other than Randy.
Given that, I would move to appoint the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem as alternate signers or for signers for the money market account and the pile bill account.
Thank you, Jeff. Second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, James. Any discussion about that? All in favor? Okay, moving on to staff updates.
If if I could see the two of you before you leave tonight, I have something for you to sign. I was prepared in case. Uh, my my apologies. I've I've been out of the office until about noon today all week, so I attended the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks Conference this week. Patty attended with me. It was her first conference. But other than that, I don't really have a lot to report. Sorry.
Hey, Arch and Rick?
Yeah, just a few quick updates, just for your information in the public, our picnic shelter construction is moving along. We have had a small snag, our first snag with supply availability, so our our metal roof right now has been delayed by about three weeks is what they're telling me. So unfortunately, we've gotten to the point where we're waiting for the roof before anything else can happen, so we won't see a lot of movement in the next few weeks. But they feel pretty confident we'll still get it done in in times. So we're waiting on that, but otherwise we passed our sewer plumbing and electrical roughing inspections, so we're we're good to go and just waiting for that roof to 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 come in. Other than that, we got a busy month coming up at the park. We've got starting next week, soccer will begin, so expect busy lots of kids out here in the park, so we have practices starting next week. Also, September sixth will be our free produce market from three to four at the picnic shelter. September twenty-third, we'll have the Red Cross Blood Drive. September eleventh will be the Mills River Valley 5K here in the park, and September twenty-fourth will be the Henderson County Walk to Alzheimer's. So we've got a busy month coming up. Just on that note, too, last, this past, I guess, two weeks ago, we held a party in the park. As the Parks Department, we gave out free bicycle helmets. We were able to give out three hundred and forty-two bike helmets because of need, which was great. We did that through some funds assigned from you all, as well as a grant from the North Carolina Park and Transportation. So we had a lot of appreciation for that, and there was probably about fifteen hundred people that came and participated in that event, so that was great. That's all I got.
I will say that I've been going down and and visiting the new picnic show, the bathroom facility, and you know, I do it for a living, so I wouldn't naturally pick it apart, but all in all, it's gonna it's gonna be fine. They messed up on a few things, nothing that's gonna be, that's not gonna pass inspection, I don't think. But I think if someone would just tell them the kind of money that we're paying, they just need to tighten up just a little bit on their workmanship. Yeah, we're paying, you know, residential money, even though it's commercial atmosphere down there, it just some of their workmanship is kind of getting off to the side. They could tighten it up, and I'll be glad to talk to them. I just have no contact information.
Okay, oh, yeah, for you. You want to come talk?
Okay, thank you. Uh, planning director?
The only update I had is I wanted to notify the board, we received a zoning permit application and the full plans set for the Jaffa's Town Home Development this week. So I'll probably start that review next week. And again, I'll notify you once that permit has been issued. Again, checking to make sure all the specialty's permit conditions have been met and that it meets all, you know, zoning requirements.
Okay, thank you. Now, manager?
I mentioned earlier in the meeting about the the ARPA funding, and I think we should start looking at tackling that. And and Mr. Young and I spoke this afternoon, so I'll let him offer offer his piece, but I I think we're to the point now, we've got some general ideas and want to start having those those in-person workshops with council as well as the public, so I'll I'll reserve my comments on that for for Mr. Young. One thing I did want to mention is Sue did not mention, but she's been recertified as a North Carolina Certified Municipal Clerk. She was recognized at the conference for that, so just wanted to point that out. We're very proud.
So how many years is a certified clerk now?
Oh, my. I received the the Certified Municipal Clerk from IIMC in two thousand and five and then received my Master Municipal Clerk in two thousand and twelve from the IIMC, and then they started the North Carolina Certified Municipal Clerk Program just over five years ago. So with all of my other certifications, I immediately qualified, and then I had to receive points and work towards maintaining it. So and this this is my first recertification, so it's been a lot of hard work.
Absolutely, and we appreciate it, too. Okay, council comments. We'll start with Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting, and we had the budget amendment where Simone was moved over related to the American Rescue Plan, it's been on my mind. And I did have a conversation earlier today with the town manager expressing some of my thoughts on it and my intent to bring it up at council comments, but basically I just want to urge this council to start moving forward. And basically, I think kicking off is having a special call, meeting, a workshop. And as the town manager said earlier, I think at that point, we can identify categories or buckets that, you know, we want to designate the money to be identity or identify these buckets for the money to be put towards. You know, and some things, obviously, farmland preservation could be one of them, nonprofits, this council's already shown an interest in supporting nonprofits that serve residents in Mills River, you know, recreation may be another, and there may be five buckets or ten buckets, but I think we need to go ahead as a council to identify those. And once we have those identified, we can move forward with soliciting input from the public and and figuring out what portion of this pie, this ARPA pie, that we want to devote to each one of those categories. And and the town, the town staff has, you know, ample experience on gleaning information from town residents in the way of surveys and input sessions, and I think we can start kicking those off. But I would like to, rather than like at the last meeting, you know, we're kind of flat-footed on what we're going to do with the money, that I'd like to see us have a plan or implementing a plan, the plan being we're having a workshop, we're having public input sessions, and then we hope to be soliciting applications, just like Ms. Williams with Merlack, you know, was anxious to to maybe provide an application for new needs or special one-time needs that they might have. And so we can at least say that we anticipate taking applications, you know, first of twenty twenty-three, but the clock's ticking to obligate this money, you know, we're down to just a little over two years, but it'll go by fast, as you point out, Mayor Gaunt said, you know, this could be a few months before we really get to rolling, and it may be six months for actually in a position where we're taking applications. But I just want to see us be more diligent about going through that process and getting it underway just so that we don't paint ourselves into a corner and start running out of time.
I think that's a great idea. Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, not unless the town manager would like to elaborate on any of that or provide guidance.
I think that pretty well sums it up. I I have been working on this kind of behind the scenes with a with a timeline in mind, and the month of October sticks out to me that we could do some of this work. So I think the next step is I'll put together a tentative schedule, and I'll share it with the board and make sure that we we have them will be available. And then we'll start outreach into the public to to put the word out so that we can we can get this stuff ironed out.
Okay. I know the first week of October, I'm slammed, so if we're going to do a daily workshop, this might save your rescheduling.
Okay.
James, what you got for us? Nothing. Randy?
I'm good.
Sandra?
I'm good. Um, I have noticed we've had a lot of big rainstorms lately, and the there's a lot of standing water in the roads, and it's running down driveways. I've worked on this some myself, but I think we need to we could even look at using some ARPA funds for maybe getting the roads fixed a little bit for the stormwater runoff. And that's county-wide, our township-wide for Mills River.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, and the MPO today, they made us aware that the state has reappraparated some sales tax money and put like six point seven eight billion dollars back into the roads through twenty thirty-three. So a lot of the things that had been taken off the books just a couple of months ago, a few of them are getting flipped back in there, so we'll see how it goes. Uh, one thing councils should be aware of, to be honest with you, I wasn't even aware of it until I started going to these TAC meetings and MPOs. The plan is to make uh, two eighty from Dr. Norton's back out past Ingalls at the one ninety-one intersection, basically one ninety-one to one ninety-one. Limited access. Like, you may have to go away to North Mills River Road to turn to come back. I don't know, I ain't seen any of the drawings or any of that, but it's out there. Right now, it's out of the loop. But it could come back into the loop. Uh, but just so you're aware that that's the plan, and then they're talking about at some point going all the way back up uh, two eighty and making it limited access points as far as turning. Their theory is you can't, they don't want people turning in front of people. Crossing over, go to a light or something and make that turn. And not just be able to turn, have a, they'll do away with the turn lane. That'll be a grass median or planted trees with curb or something, but yeah, no, no. The farmers and all need to know that because with farm equipment, and that was my plea at the TAC meeting is, you know, we got farms across the road from each other. You're going to make these tractors, DS plows, planters, all this go length of it for length of it sometimes just to get across the road. I don't know if it's a good fit for Mills River. I understand their problem, but sometimes a tractor being on the road several miles might be more dangerous and because there's really no way through there to turn. And that was my other argument. I said, if you limit the turn at Ingalls, the first entrance of Ingalls, then really there's not a whole lot wanting to turn until they get something else going, like R D, they might be turning if they're coming this way when they get that established, but.
Well, sometimes, too, the line to turn into Ingalls gets quite lengthy down through that center turning line. And that's going to put all that traffic going down to North Mills River probably turn in.
And I don't know about y'all, but I told them that the turn from headed westbound on two eighty on the North Mills River is an awkward feeling turn to wait on that light and go or try to take a chance in it. You know, it just don't feel right for some reason. You live there, but it just don't feel right, that long sweep to get over there. It catches people that's not from here unexpected, how quick that traffic catches you right there.
Well, it's the same thing turning on to one ninety-one up there. People don't judge distance, distance and speed coming down that hill, turn on to one ninety-one, and they'll turn, and next thing you know, they're either head on or t-bone.
So the reason I brought that up is me being a member of the MPO in the TAC meeting. If this council or any public comment coming back would not want that to happen, I could bring it up. You know, I'm only one voice there, but if I bring it up as the mayor of Mills River and as the board member, they might take, the state might take a little recognition to it, but move that money elsewhere. Because it's like a, I can't remember, like a ten million, fourteen point one million dollar project? Just that one mile stretch through there. So keep that in mind. Okay, that's all I have. Anything else before we ask for adjourn? Someone make a motion to adjourn, and I'll accept it.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you, James. Second?
I can. I'll say.
Can I give that to Sandra? All in favor? That's you. Sue, do you need this one signed?